Yeah, I think the ball is a little better.
I would like Michael to get some masks for clerk.
Yeah.
This updated.
Are we supposed to be wearing masks right now?
When we're six feet apart, we're good.
Why aren't we wearing masks? So I'd like something. I just don't want clerk to mask change.
All right, call the order. Welcome, Grand Forks City Council, Monday, August 3, 2020. We got a roll call, Marine.
Sure, Weigel. Weigel, are you on? Doc clerk?
Here.
Webber?
Here.
Mock? Kabami?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
And Veen?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. 1.2 Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, 1.3, I got a few announcements. First of all, I'd like to thank General Palmer and Colonel Sadler for their work on the Veterans Memorial Park. I think the project's coming along well. We'll all be really excited to see it in June. I know those guys are really passionate, doing a lot of good work there. We had the public transit grand opening. That actually came in on time and under budget, so I want to thank all the contractors and the construction team there, as well as Dale and our CAT team. Last week, I went out to the food drive up at the Gospel Outreach Ministries and handed out food, so I want to thank Bishop Cole and Pastor Jeremy for inviting me out there. They do it every Friday afternoon. I know there's a number of nonprofits and faith-based organizations in Grand Forks that are helping people out in their time of need, so thank you to all those that are helping out their friends and neighbors in this tough time. Just last week, we hosted a roundtable with the chamber on entrepreneurship, so I wanted to thank Barry Wilford for organizing and Tommy Kendall for co-chairing it with me. We had a good, real good discussion on how to make Grand Forks more business-friendly. We also went out, had a UAS app demonstration out there at the fire department, and our very own detective, Mike Gavir, is the chief pilot for the Northeast UAS team, so we got to look at some new apps and some really promising stuff, so we're pretty excited to see what we can get out of that. I'll do a brief, just a brief statement on COVID-19. We'll have some further display here by Michael in a moment, but as we've seen, the COVID-19 numbers increased. We've seen a strong response from the citizens of Grand Forks. People, I think, are being safer and more responsible. Businesses and the general public has been improving with their mask usage, and that's good to see. I've said it before, a citywide mask mandate would be nearly impossible to enforce and not a path we should go down at this point. With that, I feel the response from our recommendations have been very strong. From the beginning, the state of North Dakota has acted with a light touch of government and high citizen compliance and responsibility. So far, that has worked well, and I feel we're in a good place compared to the rest of the country. We're not going to deviate from that philosophy, and I ask that citizens continue to be responsible and protect one another by washing their hands frequently, maintaining their social distance, and wearing masks when physical distancing is not possible. We will get through this, we'll get through this together. We'll get through this by being calm, prepared, respectful, mindful of one another, and prayerful. With that, we'll move on.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Oh, yeah, please, Mr. Weber.
Yes, please. Just, I'd ask for a moment of silence for the 23 Latinos murdered by a white supremacist a year ago today at the El Paso Walmart.
Thank you, we'll just do a moment of silence, please. Thank you, Mr. Weber, much appreciated. I have my two awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. We got a COVID-19 update. Michael.
Mayor Botenski and members of the council, I'm Michael Doolitz. I'm the OPIAD Response Project Coordinator at Grand Forks Public Health during normal times, and now I've added on some additional responsibilities in COVID times with the addition of being part of our contact tracing team and then doing some data work for the department. So today, I'm going to present to you some data that I've gathered over the past week or so. I picked up from the last meeting that there's some unanswered questions and a real need for data among policymakers to make well-informed decisions, and so I have been trying to figure out ways that we can come up with better ways to share data with you. So the first graph that is in front of you is a graph of the data put out by the news releases from the North Dakota Department of Health localized to Grand Forks County. Our Public Information Office has been gracious enough to be on the ball with saving all this data from the beginning, and so then it makes it nice and easy for us to be able to reference back to the beginning of COVID in Grand Forks County when we were, you know, when we were very rapidly trying to prepare for what was coming. So you'll see with Grand Forks County, the green line is the number of cases per 100,000 population. I've tried to use that as kind of the standard way of comparing across slides, so we can, you know, compare both ourselves as well as other communities. So you can see that we've had kind of two, kind of spikes, I guess, for lack of a better word. The first one in April, which was related to a workplace outbreak, and then the last one, that's kind of on the downswing from unknown circumstances, community spread in July. This is another depiction looking at the number of active cases in Grand Forks County. So this, this data looks at, looks at the number of new cases, which is the red on there, the number of active cases, which is blue, and then the number of case completions, which is green, so that's individuals released from isolation or individuals who have unfortunately passed away. And this depiction is similar to the way that the governor's office was putting out the data for the state for some time, and so I thought it was a very useful way for us to look at what's going on in Grand Forks and a good visual depiction. Unfortunately, I only have data starting the first of, or from the first of May. The state, partway through the initial parts of COVID, switched from a paper-based system to an electronic system for contact tracing, and so, you know, the data available to me, you know, is reliable starting, you know, after that first of, of May. And then I wanted to look at what was going on in Grand Forks County compared to other, other similarly sized large communities in the state. So first with the graph from Grand Forks County, which is similar to the one on the previous slide, the scale is just slightly different. Ward County has had a pretty low incidence of COVID throughout, but they've been experiencing increases the same time as everybody else has. Cass County had a big surge in May. That big surge led to them establishing, like, the Red River Valley COVID Task Force, which they put together interventions such as daily testing sites in targeted populations, such as individuals who are experiencing homelessness. They've had targeted testing in those groups, as well as a number of other interventions, and have decreased to a level similar to what other communities are experiencing. And again, these are all rates per 100,000 population. And then finally, Burley Morton has had a very quick and strong increase in the number of cases that they've identified in their communities. So initially, they were one of the kind of first areas to be impacted by COVID, looking back to early April, and then they successfully got things under control for quite a while, and now they've seen a number of new cases. The state has recently established a similar task force for combating COVID, similar to what they did in Cass County, to hopefully address some of the issues, which, yeah, may be leading to further spread. And then finally, the state numbers, you can kind of see how the state has been influenced by the increases in various areas, such as the increase in Cass County, followed by the increase in Burley Morton, you know, kind of driving up the trend line for the state as a whole. I've also ran data for rural counties, so all the rural counties on the eastern side of the state minus Cass and Grand Forks, and they've had a similar increase in number of cases, similar, you know, roughly to, like, Grand Forks County, with kind of that steady increase in the number of active cases, as well as for western North Dakota. So all the counties except Burley, Morton, and Ward, and they've also seen a similar increase as well. So we're seeing more widespread increases in, in COVID in rural areas as well, so it's not just the major communities seeing active COVID cases. This is looking at the hospitalization rate compared to the active case rate for North Dakota. So at the committee of the whole last week, there was some concern about the hospitalization rate, and we weren't seeing a lot of hospitalizations happening in the community, and so I wanted to figure out a way that I could kind of discuss the magnitude of hospitalizations in North Dakota, which is relatively low. And so this, this line is the hospitalization rate per 100,000. That uses the scale on the left side, so between zero and eight cases per 100,000, actively hospitalized at any particular point in time. And then this looks at the number of active cases in the state, and that uses the scale on the right, so active cases per 100,000 population, the zero to 160. So there seems to be some sort of correlation between them, you know, with a, with a relatively strong R squared value for it. So, you know, I had always kind of operated under the assumption that hospitalizations were a little bit more of a lagging sign, but it seems that they kind of go hand in hand with increases in cases. And then for my next part, I wanted to kind of compare what we were seeing in Grand Forks County to the, a couple of different risk levels, risk level or other ways of interpreting COVID data widely. So I found three that I thought were good to share. The first one is the weekly rate of new cases, and this comes from the White House Coronavirus Task Force. They assign risk levels, and one area of risk level is looking at the number of new cases per 100,000 per week, and they look at it as a sum per 100,000. And so you can kind of see since April, we've been in the red area twice, and we've been, you know, going in the yellow most of the time, but we have also been very successful as a community getting down into the green level in, in June, so it is possible to get there. This is a risk level put out by the Harvard Global Health Institute. They've also put out a number of guidelines for things like metrics to track for contact tracing, to give you an idea, you know, what, what level of containment you're getting and what goals to strive for with, with contact tracing, with school reopenings, things like that. There's been a lot of good kind of guides to come out of there. And this looks at a seven-day rolling average of cases, and then that's expressed as cases per 100,000. So right now, we're, you know, right between the yellow and orange stage. So, you know, what they recommend at that yellow-orange stage is good testing, good contact tracing, and plus or minus stay-at-home in orange. And then finally, there was a question brought up when I recently presented this to some policymakers about comparison to what's going on in Europe, where we've had schools open and things like that. So I did, I did look at the European Center for Disease Control and Prevention and looked at their case numbers throughout Europe, and what they operate on is a 14-day rolling sum, and then they look at that and express that as cases per 100,000 population. So zero is kind of what they're going for. There are some areas of Europe that have had zero cases in the past two weeks, but most, and I'll show you on the next slide, most are in the yellow to light orange, light orange state, but there are some in dark red. So this is the map of Europe for the weekend ending last week, looking at the rolling 14-day sum in the number of cases. So the relative spread is much lower. They may have higher case numbers, and that may be related to their population. And then finally, to finish up, I just wanted to let you know that the graphs are single data points, obviously. You know, when we're looking at, you know, like, developing, you know, risk for a community or assessing risk, the number of new cases is only one component. Some other things that I personally look at are test rate per 100,000, which Grand Forks does a pretty good job on, percent positivity, which we, in the grand scheme, have been pretty low, and percent change in the number of new cases, which, you know, with a relatively smaller population, you know, there can be big swings in percent change. That's something that you take with, you know, a little bit of a grain of salt. And then finally, hospital capacity, and not just the number of COVID beds, but the overall impact of the hospital system. Hospitals are big, are large economic drivers, and we've seen what's happened when hospitals kind of had to shift their focus away from, you know, procedures and things like that, and focus on building up capacity. And so if we take away the hospital's capacity to continue doing their day-to-day business, that will have an economic impact as well. With that, you know, I am available for questions, either related to the data that I've found or related to contact tracing, or my experience with contact tracing with the department. And Debbie's available for any other questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Doolitz. Any questions from council, please?
Mr. Mayor?
More.
For me?
Who? Well, go ahead, Dana, and then we'll go back to.
Sure.
We can't see the screen right now. Who's?
That sounded like Councilman Weber.
There you go.
Mr. Doolitz, thank you very much for the additional data. It's excellent. I really appreciate you going above and beyond to bring this together. Couple comments. This, your presentation wasn't available prior to the council meeting on the web. Can we get the, this presentation distributed to the council member?
Yes, I was working on it all day today.
No, I understand, and I really appreciate that. I kind of assumed that. How readily available, or how easy is it to do an update to this data? Like tomorrow, for example, and then publish it for public consumption?
Oh, there has been, you know, kind of some, I worked on to try and figure out a way that we can easily kind of publish the data that's available. What I provided could all be kind of extrapolated, either from a data request from the, from the state or from looking at the data, or the daily data releases. You know, it's all things that are factors that can be easily kind of pulled on the state's level, and nothing's, like, individually identifiable. So it would not be overly difficult to create a dashboard on it. It would just take some, you know, developing some data relationships, so.
I think that would be excellent. I think the people of Grand Forks are starving for this sort of information. I know that I, I am. I did want to say thanks to Grand Forks Public Health for all the continued hard work, knowing full well that I'm, I'm a critic myself, and so, but I do recognize how hard everyone is working. I just, again, want more data, and also for all the help that Public Health is doing with the testing events in our community with UND. I know there's another one scheduled for this Friday that's open to the public, so if people didn't see the press release, I'm sure you can Google it and find it. I would like some clarification on mask wearing, and I don't know if that's a question for you or for Debbie, but I'm trying to figure out, after Mr. Weber's comment last week about us not wearing masks here in the council chambers, I'm trying to figure out if it is a recommendation, since we are six feet apart, if we should be wearing masks, if the recommendation is for us to wear masks right now or not.
I'll defer to Debbie on the question.
That's a very wise move.
Mayor Botenski, members of the council, as a public health professional, we always recommend masks in an environment that's indoors like this, although the recommendations are often, if you cannot be more than six feet apart, that's when you should mask. But there've been some new research studies out that show that mask-wearing more universally really reduces the risk of transmission. Keep in mind that if you're not wearing a mask, you still are spreading those droplets that can land on surfaces that other people could inadvertently touch. So that's also maybe a less concerning way of transmitting the virus, but it's still an opportunity for it to be transmitted.
Thank you.
Councilmember Weber.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to concur with Dana's comments. There, there's a great need for local information, for sharing information locally, but also for updating our, our local situation. If we look at Mr. Doolitz's charts there, actually, there was some, some unfortunate news on almost every one of those charts. We have recently experienced spikes similar to what we had back in May with the LM fiber, with the LM brass situation. So, and this, this is happening before the 10,000 students are returning to our community. So the, the idea that one single risk level assessment for the entire state of North Dakota is sufficient is misleading. In fact, Mr. Doolitz showed us a couple of measures for our community that would put us in the yellow to orange, a much more concerning level than what is being suggested by the state chart, suggesting that the entire state averaged across is all green. So I'm concerned about that. Mr. Mayor, you and I share a great deal of optimism about this, this community, affection for and optimism for its future, and including our ability to be resilient and to come out of this, this current crisis successfully. However, we don't agree on everything, and one of those issues is mask wearing. So I'd like to take a moment, please. At the beginning of the pandemic, there were mixed signals from leading health agencies, including the World Health Organization and the CDC, about mask wearing. The world was still trying to understand what we were dealing with, but after that initial period of confusion and ambiguity, the science has now come in strong and clear. Wash your hands, watch your distance, and wear a mask. Mask wearing is now endorsed unequivocally by the World Health Organization, the CDC, the American Medical Association, the American Hospital Association, and the American Nursing Association. Recently, we've even seen President Donald Trump wearing and endorsing the wearing of masks. I'd like to take a moment to read a portion of a recent letter to the general public. As physicians, nurses, hospital and health system leaders, researchers, and public health experts, we are urging the American public to take the simple steps we know will help stop the spread of the virus: wearing a mask, maintaining physical distancing, and washing hands. We are not powerless in this public health crisis, and we can defeat it in the same way we defeated previous threats to public health, by allowing science and evidence to shape our decisions and inform our actions. The toll of this pandemic is already staggering, and it will take many months, perhaps years, to truly understand its impact on our country and our way of life. But what is certain, and what the science and evidence are telling us, is that COVID-19- But what is certain, and what the science and evidence are telling us, is that COVID-19 is not behind us, and we must resist confusing reopening with returning to normalcy. Doing so will escalate this crisis and result in more suffering and death. To those of you who are already doing your part in helping turn the tide of this pandemic, thank you. Your actions are critical to stopping the spread of COVID-19. Moving forward, we must all remain vigilant and continue taking steps to mitigate the spread of the virus to protect each other and our loved ones. There is only one way we will get this, through this, and that's together. Your continued partners in health..." This was a general letter, a letter to the general public, signed by the American Hospital Association, the American Medical Association, and the American Nurses Association. Additionally, allow me to stress that wearing a mask is not something that you should just do at businesses that require, even in cases where social distancing is possible, such as our public school classrooms, university classrooms, and city council chambers. Anytime that people will be in an enclosed space for a long period of time, especially when there is a lot of talking, people need to wear a mask. Whether you're a conservative or a liberal, a teenager or a macho man, wash your hands, watch your distancing, and wear a mask. Unfortunately, our state and our cities' failure to require mask wearing has put businesses in the untenable situation of having to compete financially amid a vacuum of public policy. It would be so much better if we provided clear, consistent policy leadership to secure public health. If we want the ability to socialize, if we want to enjoy public events, if we want UND students to be safe from us, and if we want to be, remain safe from them, if we want the benefit from all the sacrifices we've already made and avoid having to shut down our economy again, which will be even worse the next time, if we want to show respect to firefighters and law enforcement by helping to make sure that they can do their jobs without also having to deal with high infection rates, we need to do what we can, including wearing masks. Now, in a nod to separation of church and state, pastors and congregations should be able to make their own decisions about such matters. But everywhere else, as elected officials responsible for the public welfare, we must do something about making sure that we are doing all we can: washing hands, social distancing, wearing masks. So I believe that it might be possible to make a motion and perhaps even get the votes necessary to pass such a mask-requiring code or law in our city. But at this point, I think that that would lead to even greater division. Even if the vote were to pass successfully, I don't think it has the broad support that it currently needs. I will continue to watch our leadership, our city council president, our mayor, for leadership on this issue so that businesses can have a predictable environment in which they're, they're trying to stay open and prosper. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. I think we probably agree on about 99.8% of that. I think it just comes down to that one word that seems to be different. I think we may disagree in what government's role is in an everyday person's life. I think if we wanted to go down the route that you're saying, a plan and speaking with the city attorney would definitely be in the order, but I certainly agree that we do need to be wearing masks, and we need to be asking and recommending people to wear masks. I just don't think a mandate enforcing people and telling people what to do is the right course of action at this time.
In my conversation with public health officials today, I was asking, what do I need to do to help convince people to wear masks? What can I do in my role on the council? And they said the number one thing that, that needs to be done for public health issues of this sort is policy. There needs to be policy change. So I hope that we will continue to work together. I've been impressed with your, your leadership already in your short term as mayor, and I look forward to working with you further.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Ms. Dokler?
For Councilman Sandy, I believe the Herald is updating every day with new COVID numbers, as well as they have a widget that they've embedded into a lot of their articles that shows the daily positives in Grand Forks. They're doing it by a daily number.
Vice President Mock?
We're also testing our wastewater for COVID-19 levels as well, aren't we? Do we have any updates, or are there any policy recommendations based on those results that we know about yet?
Good evening, Councilmember Mock, Mayor Bochinski. The information that I shared with you earlier was that the state was working on testing for wastewater throughout the state. They had shared some preliminary information with us that they hadn't found it within the city of Grand Forks. I haven't heard anything more from that. I can ask for an update and share that as well, but that's just an indicator.
Do we know what, so if it were to test positive in the future, do we have any idea what that would mean for the city as, in terms of how many people have it, or are there any conclusions we can draw from that, or is the science not there for that yet?
I guess I'm not sure. You know, I think it's really too early to draw conclusions from that, but I can inquire and share what I find out.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Doolitz?
Mayor, if I could just point out, there were two citizen comments regarding this matter, and they're attached to the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Dorset. All right, we'll move on. Mr. Veen, we'll go back, rewind, go ahead.
I know last week, we talked a little bit about what was happening, and I think Mr. Phelan mentioned that you and he were meeting with the university, and you're trying to put together some type of, as you and I have talked, I'd love to see a plan of some sort, because I think people need to know at what point, where we are today, at what point would we implement certain levels of precaution. The idea for me is, is it's better to be proactive than reactive, and there will need to be some trigger points, I'm thinking, before, when, when maybe there are certain indicators hit a certain level. Do you have any new updates? I mean, I know the university, of course, has their plan to date. Do you have anything that you see? Does there need to be, I hate, you know, don't know if it's another committee or whatever it is, to be able to try to address it. I hate to force things down, or force people to do things. I'd rather educate them, but at the same token, at some point in time, we may have to make bold decisions based on good data. And I know I was talking to, earlier with Mr. Sandy about the need for good data, and I think you helped with some of that. I think the data is there, you just got to find it and figure out how to interpret it. But the data isn't the end-all either. I mean, there is going to be things that go beyond the, beyond data. And I think there's a lot of concern now with the public schools starting up and what that means. I know there's also equally concern about what's happening with the university when those students are here. Obviously, the students have a certain protocol they follow while they're in school, but as soon as they leave school, there's, there's nothing that I know of. And, and I'm not sure that that makes good policy for us to not do anything or have anything in place additional. And I was hoping, you know, Mayor, that with the work that you're doing, that there would be something that would come out, that we could do that, because time is slipping by, and if we don't do something soon, sooner, then we are going to be reacting. And, you know, the thing, we talk about masks, and the masks as, as a part of the solution is kind of a proactive thing, so we don't have to have business shut down and, and schools shut down. I think that's what we really, really want to avoid. So is there a way that we can proactively do things? And some of it may not be like mask wearing, you know, can be viewed as infringing on people's personal rights, but we have lots of things, like speed limit laws that could be perceived as, you know, impinging on, on your rights too, as well as, I don't know, texting and driving. All those things are in place to keep others safe. And so this is the same type of a thing as we go forward, but I'd like to make sure we do it for the right reasons and in the right way that makes it effective. And so I'm going to stay on top of this one and ask more, because if we don't, then I think we have no choice, at least that I see from a policy group, to, to come up with more of a mandate, more of a requirement than what I'm seeing so far.
Yeah, certainly. We're working each week with, well, with our institutional partners, with Altra, with the Air Force Base, with UND, with the school district. The plan right now has largely been testing based on how we're going to surveillance test, how we're, and it's really based right now on what are we going to have access to for supplies, not just what are our resources going to be, not just how many people do we want to test. So there's a plan in place. I think we'll be, probably by the end of this week, we'll be able to unleash that plan. But there's so many different factors to keep in mind. I mean, the mortality rate, how the therapeutics are coming along, the hospitalization rate, the percentage of positive tests. There's certainly a lot of data that can be put into some sort of trigger point. But what are we really talking about? If we're talking about the trigger point, we're talking about businesses being closed and travel restrictions. We can completely eliminate the virus in Grand Forks, but if people are still allowed to travel here, it's always going to be a threat. My concern is if we go down the road of a mask mandate, we can't step that back. That's here until the virus is completely gone. Now we've lost that step. Now the next step is going to be travel restrictions, complete shutdown. It's a slippery slope, and I think we have to be very careful and very mindful when we make these decisions. But I agree with you, having a plan in place is, is great, and I think as, as policymakers and as the council here, as, as the legislative arm, I'd love to see us getting grouped together or working, having a more definite plan going into the future outside of the testing that we're, testing plan that we're currently working on.
So Mayor, do you know, you, you mentioned maybe in a week you'd have something that you think you'd, you'd come back to us with?
Yeah, I would hope by next Monday. I know we would, the goal had been by the end of the month, but there's just, as you know, there's so much data, and it's ever-changing, that, and then getting all the institutional partners to come together and present their data so that we can compile it all together as a community-wide. And it's, it's really, it's, in the, in the end, the ask is to try to get some state resources here so that we can get tests turned around quicker. If we can get test results turned around in a day or, or even 48 hours, our contact tracing becomes a lot easier, because you don't have four days, five days, six days worth of people moving around, touching, talking around other people. So that's been largely the, the goal of this group, and Mr. Weber's done a great job with that group, and, and we have another expert panel that's, that's along the same lines of what you're saying. I think dialing in one of those groups to have that exact plan is, is probably not a bad idea.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, on this topic of testing, if I have, I have a question for Mr. Doolitz, if I may.
Yes, please, go ahead.
It's a, it's a bit of a personal matter. I was helping my elderly parents in Utah a couple of weeks ago, and it's a hotspot, it's a red spot there. Infection rates are quite high. So when I came back, I, I took advantage of the soonest test that I could get, which was the testing event last Thursday. That's now been four days, and I have not yet received my test results. I was told at the time that it could take one to four days to get those results, but you've just mentioned getting test results more quickly. It's going to be at least five days before I get my test result. That's, that's a long time for people to not know. If our main line of defense is testing, and we're not getting results for five days. So, Mr. Doolitz, can, can you talk about that? And one of the things I've heard is, well, you're getting news out to people with a positive test within 48 hours, so can I assume that I'm negative because I haven't heard yet?
Councilmember Weber, that's a good question. What we've seen in like the past week or so has been an increase in the amount of time it's been taking to get test results back. You know, and that's, you know, a lot of that's anecdotal, and that's the best we have right now, are anecdotes as far as testing time. I don't have a really good systematic way of, of looking at that yet, but I can, you know, keep my, my quest going. What we saw from the last UND testing event was, the testing event was, I believe, Thursday?
Yes.
And then we saw the results, the positive results come in on Sunday. You know, the testing event before that, the event happened on Wednesday, the results came in on Saturday and Sunday. So, and, you know, I talked with somebody today who had gotten tested, the state lab had run the testing, you know, the test results, and he got tested Wednesday, and he didn't get anything back until this morning. So there has been an increase in the amount of time that it's been taking. That does increase the risk for asymptomatic positives, that they're going out and doing things in that meantime, between the test and the results. For symptomatic positives, generally individuals, once they experience symptoms, self-isolate, so then our big concern is the, the two days beforehand when they're infectious. But, you know, when we're doing surveillance testing, you know, a lot of what we're trying to do is find the asymptomatic positives, because otherwise symptomatic individuals should be able to go get testing, you know, at a location such as Altra. So there is a little bit of concern when we aren't getting good turnaround, because at the single point in time, and, you know, five days later when they get their result, that they could, that could be completely different.
Right, right. Thank you for that answer, and that's the reason I'm not there this evening. It's for your good, not for mine. I'd love to be there, actually, but for everyone, until I get those results. I wasn't going to say mask again, but if, our plan right now is so heavily dependent on testing, and the testing is getting longer and longer between the test and the results, that's, that's concerning. So we should be moving on the tools that we do have, such as mask wearing, as much as possible. Thank you again.
Thank you. Council President Sandy?
Yeah, thank you. I think it's important to point out, you know, for myself, I believe the folks in Grand Forks are smart, we're courteous, and we're caring of other people. I believe people are doing the right thing, their social distancing. I see people all over town wearing masks. There are lots of businesses in town that are implementing mask mandates. I think that's their right, and I think it's frankly the right thing to do for their businesses. I, I don't support today a mask mandate, because I believe people are making the right decisions, and I think we should let people make good decisions. However, Mr. Weber, if it makes you feel better, from now on, I'll wear a mask in council chambers, okay? So as soon as I'm done talking, I will put it on. And I, I do also think that it's important for people to know that the school district has reached out to, to us, and the mayor and I are having a meeting with the school board president Flynn and Dr. Brenner on Wednesday morning. And I believe my mind could be changed if the school district says, because of XYZ, we need, we need certain things from the city. I'm certainly open to helping the school district in any way we can, because I know it's very important that the students go back to the class so that their parents can get to work. I know it's very important, and if that's a goal for all of us, and if we know that any sort of, if they let us know that any sort of a spike means kids are going home, I think perhaps a mask, mask mandate then may be, may be necessary in order to support the schools, school district. But we'll learn more, and hopefully we'll be able to share more next week.
Can I just add a little anecdote? We've seen some really good compliance with businesses and mask mandates. They're seeing it as kind of an economic thing. You know, when you're losing individuals from your business for a period of time, you know, that isn't very good for the, the bottom line, for keeping people productive. And so we've seen a lot of businesses implement masking rules for their employees, and I, it makes my life so much easier as a contact tracer, because even if you have to quarantine some individuals, you know, because, you know, even if you're still within six feet for longer than 15 minutes, you're both wearing a mask, it significantly decreases the risk but doesn't eliminate it. So some of those individuals still have to be quarantined, but we aren't seeing them turn into positive cases, which is the good part. So there, you know, a lot of businesses have been really stepping up, and, you know, it's great that we see a lot of people in town wearing masks. My, you know, my experience has been, you know, there's been, you know, populations, like younger people, who have been kind of, you know, kind of a repository for keeping it around in the community. So individuals that are, you know, going, you know, maybe going partying or, you know, having get-togethers and, you know, at houses or things like that, and one person's infectious, and then, you know, nobody's wearing a mask, and before you know, you have an outbreak of cases. So, you know, that's, that's the bad part about it is, you know... So, you know, that's, that's the bad part about it is, you know, if we don't have a good, if we don't have a good uptake in people using masks, and situations are still going to be those, you know, those kind of pools of vectors, so.
Thank you. And I think I just would say something to be clear. As mayor of this town, I'm asking every citizen to wear a mask when they're going to be around others. That, that should be very clear. That's all we have. 2.2 Census update. Is Mr. Gangler in-house, or is he going to zoom in?
Yep, I'm on Zoom. Mr. Mayor, can everybody hear me?
We're having a hard time hearing you, Mr. Gangler.
Yeah, I was having problems earlier. I just wanted to give just a quick update on the overall numbers. One thing to keep in mind, I think as people look at these numbers, that the percentage is based on self-response rates, and they have nothing to do with or include response rates from mail-in ballots and, you know, those types of things. But the census is more so now actively getting back out on the street. Their operations were shut down for quite some time, but now the enumerators are getting out to hit those areas that were historically non-responsive, as well as they're trying to develop some techniques to send out emails and text messages to folks. But one thing to keep in mind for the general public, if you did not respond, and somebody does show up, a census worker, if you don't answer the door or you're not home, they'll leave you some contact information to establish either an email, a phone call, or otherwise to get your census accomplished. So I think if there's any public announcement to be made from this update, it's probably that, that if you do have a door hanger or something of the sorts, that that's an invitation to completely get your census. I would entertain any questions.
Any census questions from the council? Thank you, Mr. Gangler.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to three public hearings and second readings of ordinances. I believe there are none, is that correct, Maureen?
We have none.
Thank you. On to number four, action items. We were going to pull 4.1 and 4.12. Was there any other items that wanted to be pulled by council? Otherwise, we move on to consent agenda. 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, 4.8, 4.9, 4.10, and 4.11. Can I get a motion, please? President Sandy motions, and Councilmember Dr. Secondes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Carries unanimously. 4.1.
Request for co-mingling for special event 2020, dueling duels in Town Square, August 6, 2020. This application has since been withdrawn.
So I think we just need to approve the withdrawal. Is there any comments on this? Go ahead, Council President Sandy.
Yeah, I would like to thank Ms. Horak and Brick and Barley for coming forward last week and for continuing to try to do nice things for our community. I'm very sorry for them and the public outcry and in the manner that they received that public outcry. I don't believe that the hate mail was warranted for them trying to do something nice for our community. So whether you agreed with the concept of the concert or not, I think everyone in town should be, in addition to kind and caring, try to be civil as well because, just because you disagree with someone doesn't mean that berating them is a reasonable response. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President Sandy. I think that's a very good statement. I think we, we do need to be treating everyone respectfully and with dignity. I think it's, it is possible to want to have an event in Grand Forks, but also care about people's health, and I, I think that was sort of misconstrued in the, in this case.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, Mr. Weber, please.
Thank you for your words, Mr. Sandy. In fact, I feel the need to apologize for the discussion as it went last week. It was not my intention to attack Ms. Horak. I really appreciate and respect all that she does in the community, and I was hopeful that the event would go forward. I had some specifics that I was hoping to see in that going forward, and I was saddened that it was pulled. And I fear that her event got caught in the crosshairs of a discussion. So I'm saddened by her decision, and I understand it, and thank you for your words, Mr. Sandy.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any other comments, motions?
Make the motion to.
Motion, Mr. Veen. Motion to withdraw, we have a second. Council Vice President Mock seconds, the motion to withdraw. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. 4.12.
Preliminary approval of the budget and introduction of the ordinance for the 2021 budget.
And Maureen, if you wanted to give a quick update, I know it seemed we had consensus on the public safety pension plans, so we did add that to the budget. Any other updates?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Bochinsky, members of city council. Included in your staff report is a summary of the 2021 budget. The mayor did work administratively to put this together. We did preview this with city council on July 13th and presented the budget on July 20th. Fellow budget discussion was held last week at the committee hole on July 27th. There have been very good questions through this process from all, and we did have some good questions through the budget discussion as well as through email. Based on last week's meeting, the mayor has, as he just stated, made a change to his 2021 budget for preliminary approval to include the public safety pension plan. The budget inserts that you should have received in front of you tonight reflects this change with all those sheets that are impacted with those changes. There's also some minor corrections that have been included as well, so you have revised documents in front of you tonight. I'm not going to go through this whole report. Staff report hits much of the highlights, but really the mayor's focus on this budget was employees, central public safety, public health, economic growth, and expansion in a new economy. Overall, just to hit the main highlights, the budget includes a .78 mil decrease, which equates to a slight reduction to your property tax bill on average to the city. Overall, utility rates for a residential average 6,000 gallon a month user will see a slight increase of 81 cents per month or .84 percent. The general fund budget is 40.7 million, down from 41.4 million, or a reduction of 1.83 percent. Total budget all funds is 178.4 million, down from 189.5 million, or a 5.83 percent reduction as compared to 2020 budget. Of special note that I just wanted to let you all know of tonight, we did receive word today that the emergency commission met and approved an allocation of funding to cities and counties based on payroll costs of law enforcement. This will go to budget section meeting on August 13th for approval of distribution of funds. I just want to make you aware of that. Once we do get more information regarding this reimbursement and its details, we can come forward to you with a budget amendment that'll impact our 2020 budget as well as how we look into 2021. So we'll come back with more information on that for you. What we do look for tonight is to answer any remaining questions you may have and to give preliminary approval of the 2021 budget. We also need to call for a special meeting of city council to hold its public hearing, which we have set for September 14th at 5:30 here in council chambers. With that, mayor and I are, and Todd is on as well, if you have any questions.
President Sandy.
Ms. Dorsted, do we have to wait to September 14th to have that public meeting?
President Sandy, members of council, the date parameters that you have, you can't hold your public hearing any time prior to September 7th, and I believe the, no later than October 7th. So that's your window, but not prior to September 7th.
Okay. Just some general comments. All things considered, pretty ho-hum budget. There are no real surprises, nothing that I found that was out of the ordinary one way or the other. I certainly do think that we should try to, assuming we get the dollars from the state, we should, we should have our capital reserve fund. We should be putting money aside for capital purchases if we do get the money from the state. I certainly think that that's where it should go. We also have a golden opportunity to use those funds, as Mr. Veen mentioned to me earlier, as a way to pay ourselves for special projects or whatever that we can do locally that can help generate jobs and those sorts of things. So I think we should be very, as using Mr. Veen's words, very strategic with that, with that money. I continue to be concerned about the Alaris Center and its long-term viability. I know that there are several people working on the lease renewal with U N D for the football games. I think that is very important. But I do believe that, I'm almost to the point where we should start a task force and start talking about how are we going to handle the finances long-term for, for the facility? Because I don't believe, I don't believe under its current financial situation that it is viable beyond 2035-ish. We're going to be, the facility's going to be broke for, related to capital improvements, and so we've got to figure that out. Ultimately, I think, of course, you, Ms. Dorsted, and your finance team, I'm working with the mayor, under a short timeline and a very stressful situation, have all put together a very good budget, and I really appreciate all the work that you've done and Mr. Mayor. Great work. Really, really good job coming in. Again, short timeline, steep learning curve. Really appreciate all the time that you've put in walking the halls around here and talking to people and learning and thinking, and I think you did an excellent job, and I'm very, very appreciative of that. So with that, I'll move approval, but certainly I'm open to other discussion from anyone else.
Do we have a second, and then we can, some more comments? Mr. Wild, a second. Go ahead, Vice President Mock, please.
One thing that does concern me is whether prairie dog funds will be there in the future, and I know we had that kind of set for the Siren project, is that correct?
Yes. If we do receive prairie dog funds, the top priority has been for radio communications and then streets for the remainder. We have delayed expected revenue from prairie dog out two years from what our previous estimates were, and we'll continue to monitor that. Right now, we're looking at fourth quarter of 2022.
I just, if we would happen to get some of those funds in, I think that's maybe a project that we should look at as a potential with those funds. Although I do agree with the sentiment of being strategic with any money that would come in. I think that that's just one that would rise in importance as well.
Ms. Mock, Mayor Bochinsky, President Sandy, members of council, some of the things, and we'll work through all this when we do know more about the reimbursements that we'll receive. We'll have to look at number of items such as the COVID impacts that we're looking at in 2020, what reserves we're looking at spending down, cash that we're spending down as part of that plan, capital projects, different capital items that have been reduced. So in that all, we're gonna, we'll have to take a look at the best use of those funds when we know the timing and how much we will be receiving, and look at a combination of, and including your concern with radios and how we can work that into the plan as well.
Ms. Dockler.
So, Mayor, in conjunction to the remainder of the 2020 budget and the 2021 that we're currently discussing, could you update the rest of council? Because they haven't been privy to all the conversations we've been having necessarily in real time about the future and the implementation of the welcoming community roadmap?
Yes, thank you. I guess first I could probably thank you, Becca Kruger, Cynthia Schaub, and the steering committee. I know they've been working very hard to find, to make sure that the future is going to be what we want it to be. The city itself is going to house the roadmap, as we've previously stated, where we've had a lot of help and coordination to find where that coordinating position is going to be housed. I think the promising sign here is that with the city putting $15,000 off of that, we've already confirmed another $20,000. So there's been a public-private partnership there that's matched the city's funds by more than 100%. So I think that's, that's pretty exciting to see, not just other entities, but businesses as well, coming around to support that. And, yeah, we've had a lot of meetings, and I think we've done a good job. So I want to thank you, Ms. Dockler, for all your help on that. If you have anything else, please.
I am glad that it is, the welcoming community roadmap is going to be staying with the city as a mayoral initiative, similar to the Mental Health Matters Initiative. And so it will be interesting moving forward. There's still a lot of work to do, but the steering committee is also welcoming the mayor onto that as well to move it forward. And then we are currently discussing how to transition from the 2020 budget to the 2021 and the implementation of moving the welcoming community roadmap to a different nonprofit within the community. Those talks are still ongoing, but we are definitely working towards a compromise that's going to make sure that this is a successful transition and that the work isn't interrupted because it is extremely important work for many, many people in our community. And so I think that it will, it will be interesting to see how it all works, but I'm glad, and the support that we've been able to raise from the public and private partnerships that have come forward to equal that 20 grand in secured funding with an additional close to 25 grand out in asks to boards and other employers that are considering the request to match funding for the programming. It really does show the importance of what was committed to by council a couple of years ago when we first started this, this initiative.
Thank you, Ms. Dockler. Any other comments or questions?
Just real quick, Mayor. Just thank you to you. I've been blowing up your phone lately, and we've had a lot of conversations and a lot of talks about how to get this public safety retirement plan implemented, and so thank you for that. Thank you to my colleagues on the council for, for listening and understanding how important this is for retainment and recruitment of new police officers and firefighters, and to city staff, Maureen, Tangi, everybody in HR and finance, Chief Nelson and Chief Lorenz, thank you for that. I think it was something that was difficult, and it's tough to do, but I think it goes to show that when the employees are working together with our department heads and the mayor and the council, we can, we can accomplish a lot of great things. So I think this will serve our first responders well in the future, and I'm excited that we're able to get it implemented in the budget. So thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Please, Mr. Weber.
Yes, this has been both a, COVID has been both a public health crisis and an economic crisis. We're fortunate in the city to have a jobs development authority, and it's just worth taking a moment to discuss that, some concerns and other things that I have about that. But first, I don't know that everyone in the city knows what our jobs development authority is. It was passed by the voters. Under the authority of the voters and enshrined in City Code, Chapter 24-0102, states, "It is the intent and purpose by adoption of this article that the authority is to accommodate the community and region at large with a cohesive governing body that, through direct and indirect actions, will encourage the creation of new jobs, enhance the economic climate, save existing jobs, create new wealth, enhance the local property tax base, encourage capital investment, improve the quality of life, enhance tourism and local events, promote public-private and public-private enterprises or partnerships, and diversify the local economy." This is always important work, important work to be conducted in our community and by our, by elected officials. And so with that, with COVID, it's going to be even more important. So some quick comments about how the accounts 5996 and 2163 are addressed in the budget. I appreciate the modest bump, but the bump to the new human needs fund, I suspect it will have some extraordinary human needs in our community in the coming year, the likes of which we've not seen since the Great Depression. Many in Grand Forks will possibly be doing fine, but low-age workers, including grocery store workers and those who have lost their jobs, are going to need our support so that they can stay in Grand Forks and so that they can stay healthy. We will need them as we rebuild our economy. I am, however, displeased by the 50% cut to contingency funds. If ever there was a time for contingency funds to support the unexpected, it's now and in the coming months. However, this is only a budget. It's a plan. We'll have to recognize newer realities as they emerge and deal with them. Perhaps the single greatest example of my concern about how this budget was put together is the sudden cut to zero for the Herald building fit up. The Herald building is not owned by the mayor. The JDA and the people of Grand Forks now own that building. And while COVID has dramatically changed many things in our community, and it's probably a good idea to rethink what needs to be done with the Herald building, that rethinking needs to be done in a thoughtful collaborative manner. And this budget does not represent such a process for that piece. However, we're all working to understand how to operate in this most unusual period in our city and our nation's history. And so what I'm going to ask is not any change in the budget as proposed and according to Council President Sandy's motion, but I am requesting that budget accounts 2163, the Economic Development Fund, and 5996, the Grand Forks Jobs Development Authority Growth Fund, be reviewed by the Growth Fund Committee, which includes members of the council as well as broader community representation, and the Jobs Development Authority, which includes all members of the council and the mayor, each serving with equal authority and voting power. I'm asking that these budget lines come before those two bodies in the same way that city departments are asked for their recommendations as the mayor is putting together his or her budget proposals. So all I'm asking for at this time is a change in future practice. And like others, thank you for the impressive work on this budget. You picked a hell of a time to choose to be mayor and to run for election. This is a tough time and the budget had to come together very quickly with a lot of other things going on. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Weber, members of council. To your point, we, I believe there's a Growth Fund Committee meeting that's looking to be scheduled for the 24th. And we can bring the budgets forward to that meeting.
Yeah, what I'm asking for is with city departments, they were being consulted, I believe, months in advance of putting the budget together, asked for their input, what do they see? What kind of recommendations do they have for the budget? I'm suggesting that we do the same thing for the Growth Fund Committee and the JDA in the future. That February or March, we start thinking in terms of the next year's budget with those two committees.
Yeah, definitely. I think that'll be the case. Good. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Veen.
Just one question, and I wanted to continue the discussion. Mr. Sandy had mentioned very briefly about the Alara Center. I think we've said this probably before, but had it not been COVID, I think we would have probably had the best year ever there. And I don't think we would necessarily be having the same concerns that we have today, especially not knowing what the long-term impacts are going to be. Because it is going to be, there is impacts. There's just no question about it. I think, I think the staff, Anna and the staff out there have done a tremendous job in getting us to where we are now for the coming year. But it's going to be challenging. And it may be, I know she's reached out to the two of you as about, a long-term, about figuring out a solution there. And her and I have had many talks about that. As your council rep, we know the importance of what we're doing for financing. So it may take a while before we know the true impacts and what the long-term solution needs to be. It would be nice to say there'll be a turnaround and we won't have any issue, but we won't know for a little bit of time yet. So give us a little bit of time and then we may, we certainly need to get together and see what, how it goes.
Yeah, and I don't think Mr. Sandy has any lack of confidence at all in Anna and her, Ms. Specter team out there. I think it's more long-term issues with the city owning such an event center. So. Any other comments, questions? Are we having a motion and a second for preliminary approval and introduction of ordinance, 2021 budget? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Item five, informational items.
Investment portfolio summary is of June 30th for 5.1. And 5.2, statement of changes in cash balance is of April 30th.
Thank you. Six citizen comments?
We have no more in addition to what was already attached to the COVID update.
We're moving quickly now. Seven, approval of minutes and bills. 7.1.
The vendor list and engineer's estimate as presented.
We have a motion to approve. We got a motion by Councilmember Pommie and a second by Council President Sandy. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. 7.2.
And the minutes from June 15th, June 23rd, the San and Dai, and June 23rd organizational and July 6th.
Got a motion by Mr. Veen and a second by Mr. Sandy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Minutes are approved. Number eight, city administrator comments. Mr. Feen, you got anything for us today?
Thank you, Mayor. Good job on the budget.
That's it? All right, thank you, sir. Number nine, man, council member comments. Council members at large, any comments?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Vice President Mock.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that the safety plan, both were attached, but there were letters of support from firefighters and the Fraternal Order of Police. So I think it's important to remember that those were supported by employees as well, including contributing their $1,000 to make that happen. So I think it's important that we note that. Also, I think the welcoming coordinator roadmap, I think I got more emails on that than any other budget item ever. So I think it's important that there was work done to get to a compromise to address that issue. The only other thing I wanted to mention is I do share some of the need that we expressed earlier for putting a plan together. I'm particularly concerned that as cases creep up, we get used to higher and higher case numbers. So I think the best way to help the community and help us as policymakers is to work on that plan and work on, you know, certain measures that we might take or policies that we might implement if we get to certain levels. I think that's a really good way, even if it needs to be modified or we need to discuss some of those issues to come to a collective agreement. I think that that would help us go forward unified as a council as opposed to having split votes. We can have those discussions. And I just think that would help everyone involved.
That's great. Thank you. Council President Sandy, comments?
Yeah, to that end, I think that the community in general, again, I'll go back to, I think the community is in general doing the right thing. Anecdotally, Mr. Mayor, since we've reopened city offices, do we, and I know it's sensitive information, but in general, have you, has anyone that works for the city tested positive? Do we know?
I think at the library there was, there was.
But the library's been closed though, right? So the library is still closed, right?
Excellent point.
So I think that's, my point is, I think it's good. I think people in general are, they're being respectful of others and I'm certainly thankful that people are continuing to be healthy. And I recognize and agree with Ms. Mock's thought process, though. Having an identified set of rules that we're going to follow and understanding that at what point do we make changes, I think it's important for us, rather than being reactionary, as Mr. Veen mentioned, giving ourselves a guideline so that, I mean, purely for cover for ourselves that when the time comes, if the time comes and we have to do something, we can tell people, well, that was part of our plan and we got there and that's what happened and so that's what we did. I think it would be good for us and also good for the community to have an understanding of what our thought process is. So once again, and finally, Mr. Mayor, thank you and our fine finance folks, as well as really thanks to everyone that works for the city of Grand Forks. We are very fortunate to have some very talented, dedicated, hard-working people that risk, take risks every day trying to do what they think is right for our community. And I really appreciate all of them. Frankly speaking, I have not met a bad city employee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I think I could echo the same, not just the finance department for all their hard work, but the hard work from all the departments through this. This has been a challenging time and a unique time for everybody. You know, very dynamic and we've, I think we've done just about the best job that we can. So thank you to all city staff and council members too. Thank you for your hard work and pushing this budget through relatively quickly, but very concise. So I appreciate that. And I will just add one more thing. It is my wedding anniversary today. So I'm going to be happy to adjourn this shortly so I can spend a little time with my wife of 13 years. So with that being said, let's move to item number 10, adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn? President Sandy, motions and Vice President Mock, seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Meeting is adjourned.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you.